Now, I will call to order the Thursday, March the eighth, no, Thursday, March the 22nd, public hearing of the planning board of the city of North Hampton. We begin every meeting with a period of public comment. This is for anyone who has comment on an item that is not on the agenda. Item not on the agenda.
I have this on my, or anything, if I have a corporate deal on it.
Yep, but is it about the items that are on the agenda?
Yeah. I don't have any agenda.
Oh.
I received this.
Okay, then you'll be a separate public comment for that. Okay. This is just an open meeting thing that we have to, no, no, that's okay. So, hearing none, we will move to the items that were continued from March the 8th. That is four public hearings and presentations for Verizon Wireless to add telecommunications equipment to existing utility poles in front of 12 Summerfield Street Florence, MAP ID 29-113, in front of 275 Elm Street, North Hampton, MAP ID 31A-10, on existing utility pole in front of 27 Ladd Avenue in Florence, MAP ID 30B-81, and on existing utility pole near 101 Riverside Drive Florence, MAP ID 23D-049. Is there a presentation? Please identify yourself and do your presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. My name is Attorney Michael Fenton. I'm with Schatz, Schwartz &amp; Fenton. We have an address in Springfield at 1441 Main Street, Suite 1100. Joined here today by our Verizon Wireless team, Jay Latori, who's our radio frequency engineer, and Tom Johnson, who's our architect and engineer with Proterra Design Group. What is before you today is site plan review for four utility pole installations. Each of these installations include certain support equipment and one antenna with the intention of providing data and voice coverage in the immediate vicinity of each of these facilities. Before I ask Mr. Latori to come up and talk about the project design and what they're intended to do, I just want to alert the board that this is not new technology to the area. We are in a majority of municipalities in western Massachusetts in the Pioneer Valley, very recently secured permission for very similar installations in Amherst, we're in South Hadley, we're in Springfield, we're in Long Meadow, East Long Meadow, and we've found that this is a really nice solution that helps in a very innocuous way to offload some of the data and coverage needs that we have in the community. So, we're very excited about this investment in the city of North Hampton and the things that it will be able to bring to our customers in terms of continuity of service. So, with that, I'll ask Jay to come up and talk a little bit about the radio frequency design, and Mr. Johnson will be able to speak to the plans.
Okay. Thank you, Attorney Fenton. Good evening, everyone. My name is Jay Latori. I'm a radio frequency engineer with Verizon. My address is 122 Forest Hills Road in Springfield, Massachusetts. And I'm going to take a couple minutes to talk to you a little bit about this technology, small cell technology, and then I'm going to walk you through, come to the highlights of each of the four applications that are before you tonight. So, Verizon, like all of the major carriers, utilizes a number of different types of structures to provide service, coverage, and capacity to residents in North Hampton and all across western Massachusetts. Our macro layer of service comes from traditional types of wireless facilities like monopole towers, radio towers, large structures typically over 100 feet in height that are necessary to broadcast service over a wide range of area, typically a two to four mile radius. Over time, as services have been enhanced, as we've moved away from the 90s and into the 2000s, the needs of our customers have changed. No longer were our customers satisfied with just being able to make a phone call and have it be clear, but data began developing in the late 2000s, and now you could check your emails, or send text messages, or check your Facebook account. Fast forward into the early 2018s, and we started seeing the prevalence of things like video calls, and watching YouTube videos, and live streaming of events or football games. And over time, we have seen something close to exponential growth of the demand for the latest technology in the United States, which is called 4G LTE, particularly on the data consumption side. And more recently, in the last two years, as Verizon has launched a voice network, advanced calling over our 4G LTE network. And so, the needs of our customers have changed. They're no longer satisfied with just being able to make a voice call. They demand 24/7 of service reliability, whether it be for personal use, connecting with family, for public safety reasons, for business reasons. We just had dinner at Fitzwillies, and the cashier, or the server that checked us out, took our credit card and used a point-of-sale interface and scanned it right there wirelessly to pay, so for, we could pay for dinner. And that type of technology oftentimes runs on wireless signals like Verizon's. And so, what this has created is a very strong need for Verizon to continue to invest in our communities with the use of small cell technology. And the purpose of small cells is to identify areas in a small area, hence the word, typically somewhere between a quarter mile to a half a mile radius, where demand may be very high, and there's a need to offload the demand from that large tower, which is covering a large geographical area. Or maybe service is a little bit weak, the signal is a little bit less than desirable, and there's a need to fill a small pocket of coverage, but it's probably not necessary to build another tall structure to fill a small hole. And so, it's a very nice complementary technology that we've been able to introduce in western Massachusetts and all across the United States in the last three and a half years to augment our technologies and services, enhance our experience for our customers, and at the same time, take advantage of existing infrastructure. So, what I'd like to do now is very quickly just walk you through each of the four applications. And I'm going to hold off on some of the technical piece of the plans. I'm going to allow Mr. Johnson to do that, but what I'll do is I'll just call to your attention each of the four utility poles and what we're trying to accomplish here. And I believe you should have a coverage maps associated with all of them, so I'll walk you through them and kind of explain the purpose of each one. So, the first application, and I apologize if they're not in the same order as you read them, but look at 101 Riverside Drive, which Verizon calls North Hampton Small Cell 5. And if you look at the first coverage map, you'll see, and all of the maps kind of have the same theme, you'll see a couple of three-sectored pie-shaped facilities. Some of the names are cut off, but to orient you on this map, one of them in the western corner is called Florence, and that's an existing Verizon facility that is co-located on a smokestack in Florence. And then you'll see in the southeastern corner, there's another pie shape, and the name is cut off, but it's called North Hampton 4, and it's our existing facility on top of Thorne's Market. And then, if you look in the northeast corner, there's another facility right off of Route 5, King Street, and that is our North Hampton 3 facility. That's that very large tower on King Street. I'm sure you all have seen it before. In the middle, you'll see Verizon also has a, what we call an in-building solution for indoor coverage at Cooley Dickinson. And then you'll see in the middle, in an area that isn't colored in green, is our proposal here, North Hampton Small Cell Number 5. Now, what these maps are, are a coverage prediction of what we call reliable service. It means that based on our transmitter locations, their height, the orientation of the antennas, the signal strength, this is a calculated engineering estimate of what our reliable service is. And so, green means reliable, and anything that isn't green means less than reliable. It doesn't mean completely devoid of coverage, it just means not as reliable. So, it could mean that you have service outside, but if you go indoors, you might lose service. Or you might have service on the second floor of your house, but if you go to the first floor and interior room, you might not have it. And you'll see here on the second map that was submitted, it says, "North Hampton Small Cell 5, Mass. Future 2100 megahertz 4G LTE coverage." That's the frequency that the Verizon radio admits. You'll see the same map, but now you'll see an area around that blue circle where the service is starting to be filled in with additional coverage. And there's a third map that will just show the service from the proposed facility, kind of give you an idea of what the coverage that this facility can provide. And again, it's a smaller facility, it's not meant to cover a large geographical area, but it allows Verizon to start to help fill in some of these gaps for our customers. What I'll do is just briefly go through the other three. They're all going to be kind of the same concept, so please feel free to stop me if you have any questions, but I just want to make sure I'm not being too redundant to you. The next one, North Hampton Small Cell 6, this is the facility that is closest to 275 Elm Street. If you take a look at the current 2100 megahertz 4G LTE best server map, you'll see the same sites, they're colored in green, blue, and red. And this map's a little bit different because this is what we call a capacity best server map. And what we're trying to show here is, assuming all things are calculated properly, the colors show you the approximate area where you would be served by that site. So, if you're closer to the Florence site in the green, you're likely going to be covered by that site. If you're on the higher portion of King Street, you'll likely be covered by the North Hampton site, which is in blue. If you're at Thorne's Market or walking through downtown North Hampton, you'll be in that red area. And if you move to the next page, it's a little hard to see, but you'll see that North Hampton Small Cell facility filled in in blue, and it's kind of a different teal, bluish color where this footprint gets filled in. Again, not a huge footprint, but Elm Street is a particularly busy area of the city when you think about Smith College and the traffic going up and down Route 9, and we are excited to be able to provide some enhanced service and capabilities in this stretch of Route 9. I'll walk you through the third one, which is called by Verizon, North Hampton Small Cell Number 8. This is the utility pole that is closest to 12 Summerfield Street. And again, you'll see the same kind of map. You're going to see some different facilities on here, only because what I try to do is keep the proposal towards the center of the map, and then you can kind of see the other facilities that are nearby this area. So, this is a facility that is meant to support a subdivision in neighborhood that is not too far from the Robert K. Finn Elementary. And what happens here is that a lot of the service in this neighborhood comes from our smokestack site in Florence. And although that site has got some decent height to it, it's about 120 feet, the smokestack itself sits almost at the river water level. And so, as you get kind of far away from the site, and you deal with things like trees and homes, the signal really kind of gets beaten down. And so, this is more of a coverage solution for Verizon to try and fill a gap that many of our customers and residents of North Hampton experience in this neighborhood. And if you look at the second map where it says, "North Hampton Small Cell 8, future 700 megahertz 4G LTE coverage," you'll see that that gap is really nicely filled in for our customers. And then if we look at the fourth application here, just to wrap this up, the Verizon name is North Hampton Small Cell Number 10, and this is closest to Ladd Avenue. Again, the maps kind of tell the tale here, and really, this one was driven by some internal drive testing that showed that a couple of the businesses and other industry elements down here, near Ladd Street, close to the river, outdoors, had weaker-than-reliable service. And so, kind of the same concept, we come in, we attach on the utility pole, we broadcast our service, and, you know, hopefully, even though a lot of those buildings are brick, you know, we'll be able to provide more robust service to that more commercial area. And the three maps kind of show the same thing, the third map showing the proposed maximum service footprint of that facility. And, you know, that's really the RF justification for these facilities. You know, they're very carefully researched to make sure that, you know, we're providing service in the areas that the city needs them both, excuse me, needs them most, to make sure that we are constantly enhancing our service for our customers and constantly responding to the demands for increasing services. And, you know, we look forward to your review of our applications, and if you, it's totally up to you, if you'd like to ask any RF-related questions, I'm happy to answer them now. Otherwise, Mr. Johnson can speak about the technical nature, and then we'll all be available for comment, whatever you guys think is best. Okay. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Tom Johnson. I'm with Proterra Design Group. Our office is at Ford Bay Road in Hadley, just over the bridge. I thought maybe the best way to kind of give you a quick overview of what we're talking about is to maybe give you some photos of some, just some recent installations and just passing around some of them here. Probably gives the best idea of what we're talking about and, um... So, the standard installation for the small cell on the utility poles, they're done through license agreements with the utility provider, in this case, National Grid. Verizon goes out, gets an agreement with them, and then there's a phase of the work where, they call it make-ready work, where the utility company may have to adjust the line up or down, or in some cases, bring in an electric service or a fiber service to that pole. And then Verizon comes in, they have a small cylindrical antenna, that's the, that goes up on the top of the pole, that you see here. And that's then connected to, we call it a remote radio head. It's the unit kind of halfway down the pole. It's attached on a bracket, it's bolted through the pole. This also then is, the radio head is powered by an electric service, so it just runs overhead from the pole, comes down into a meter and a disconnect, that then feeds into the, it gets converted from AC to DC, but then that then feeds the radio head. Then also, a fiber service is pulled overhead from the pole, that comes into a little box, and then also feeds it. So, the antenna transmits, receives, and then sends the signal back through the landline, and that's how kind of the system works. You know, in this case, there's four existing utility poles that we're proposing to install on. They're pretty minimal installations, takes a construction crew, probably less than a day to install from start to finish. There's also, like I said, depending, there's a make-ready process, and some make-ready work beforehand by the utility company if it's needed on the pole. For the work, it would typically be done on the shoulder of the street. Similar, if you see a utility company truck doing line work, in most cases, it would have a police detail there with them, but they come in, they attach their stuff, and they're bringing it out in a day. That's pretty much the scope of it.
More question. Is there, is an aesthetic component to this work? And I'm just wondering, are you governed by what side of the pole the work needs to be on, or can it be on any side, or?
Yeah, in this case, typically, the equipment that's attached to the pole, the agreements with the utility companies want most of that on the downhill side from traffic. So, in case the pole got hit for some reason, they want the electric meter and parts of it on the downhill side. And then there's also, within that agreement, there's required separations between the electric line and the equipment, and between the antenna and the top of the, all that is kind of code-based stuff.
So, it's not really facing the sidewalk or facing the street, it would be in between?
Yeah, so, it's, some of these photos may be a little different because there's a driveway or something.
Right.
But generally, if you're driving down the right-hand side of the street, the electric meter would be on the far side of it.
So, on the sidewalk side?
Oh.
No, no, not the sidewalk side, the downstream side.
Right.
And then...
If it's knocked, it's not going to...
Not going to hit that.
Yeah, and a lot of it was, these snowplows and stuff like that, they want it somewhat protected. It's a lot of this equipment...
Oh, I see, I'm sorry. That finally sunk, got it.
The, 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 the radio head is also, they're elevated up too, so it's...
Right.
It's not necessarily that big of an issue. In this case, the antennas, for radio frequency reasons, are on top of the poles. Some cases, you may see around, they go on the side, but that has to do with the specific coverage objective that they're trying to hit there, so...
I'm just curious, and I guess this would be a question back on the coverage side, technically uninitiated. Seems to have a very small, relatively speaking, footprint...
Mm-hmm.
...from a coverage standpoint. That doesn't seem particularly economically efficient. It just seems so small, I was to be curious about why, is it because of the particular characteristics of, as you said, like, you know, Elm Street between Smith College and the hospital and the high school, and that there's just particular characteristics of a particular place that that small a footprint can make a big difference?
Right. Well, every particular circumstances is certainly unique, but I would actually say in, I'll preface this by saying that for, my job for Verizon is not necessarily to focus on the most economical solution, it's to focus on the best solution with the tools I have. In this case, we feel these are the best solutions, but, you know, if I was to compare a small cell utility pole attachment to, say, like a traditional tower, you know, a lot of the work, you know, say, related to, you know, building an access road, you know, building a foundation, you know, a steel for 150-foot tower, you know, and a lot of the other, you know, maybe work that falls under the National Environmental Policy Act is eliminated through this, you know, we take advantage of, you know, existing infrastructure, you know, that is well-regulated and well-maintained. And again, you know, I would point to a lot of these examples as saying, you know, they're purposely small because they're fixing small areas. So, you know, I think actually of the four, you know, the one that really does the best job of, you know, meeting up with that phrase, "A picture is worth a thousand words," is that North Hampton Small Cell 8 facility, which is closest to Summerfield Street in that suburban neighborhood. If you kind of look at the breadth of this map, you know, this map probably, if from the center, you know, has close to a two, two-and-a-half mile radius. And we're, and then if you look at that dot showing where the proposed facility is on that first map, you know, we're really talking about a small area here. So, you know, in this circumstance, we're able to utilize existing infrastructure, you know, attached to it in a, with a small number of attachments, it makes it, you know, fairly innocuous, and achieve the coverage goal without the need to maybe, you know, try to find somewhere in a subdivision to put a pole 150 feet in the air. And I think certainly it's a reasonable argument to say that it's a more appropriate solution. Similarly, in some of those other examples that I shared with you that are more capacity-based, you know, the world is changing in terms of our demand, and sometimes we find, in order to maintain a reliable level of service, we have to make our facilities smaller, because, you know, once they turn on and someone realizes, okay, instead of, I don't know, posting a picture to Instagram, it doesn't take me five minutes anymore, it takes me five milliseconds. Inevitably, what we see in our business is that same person who wouldn't post one in a day because it drove them nuts how long it took, now posts 20 in a day, because now it's so easy. Or that person, that business owner that never decided to do point-of-sale wirelessly, now only does it wirelessly. And so, the demand can grow pretty quickly once we introduce these services. And so, sometimes keeping them small is advantageous, because the larger they are and their footprint is, the more likely they'll take additional traffic and put more demand on it, so... But again, you know, we think it's the right solution for these areas, and that's the focus.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
Other questions from the board before I open the public here? Is there anyone from the public who would like to make a comment tonight?
Good evening. My name is Delia Martinez. I own property at 289 Elm Street here in North Hampton. First of all, I have to tell you that two of my neighbors did not receive this little card that I received. And the only reason I knew that the, that the meeting is today is because I kept calling downtown, because no one ever called us. And we are the properties that are between Masasoye and the Ottoman. We are right there. And there was no notification that the meeting was changed. I knew because I kept calling to double-check, because unfortunately, winter is still here, and we've had some snowstorms that have disturbed everyone's life, and, you know, that's what happens. First of all, I have to say that I'm here by myself because my neighbor in the corner, her husband is an ER doctor, and he works this shift, and she has a baby, so she couldn't come. The other neighbor, she's an OB-GYN, and she had babies coming tonight, so she wasn't able to come. And then the other neighbor, she had planned three weeks ago that one of her family members were coming in from California, and she had to go to the airport to pick her up. So, you know, the fact that things were changed, it left me to come here to talk to you. We, all of us, my neighbors and I, bought these properties, historical properties on Elm Street, in that spot, because we wanted to be in a residential neighborhood that was quiet and that, you know, it was something that it was nice to be in that kind of neighborhood. We pay a lot of property taxes, as you well know, and we are concerned that I gave my name and number to the woman that I called on the phone, and she gave me a copy of the whole application, and I had to go and print it so that we could read it. I met with my neighbors, and we discussed everything. On page 16 of this application, you have, you have the picture on the right side of the typical wiring diagram, and it seems like in here, they have five different boxes before they put the proposed antenna at the top. And it seems to be, you know, quite a bit to put in that pole. We already have one electrical pole, well...
Is this the picture you're...
This is my, what?
Is this the picture you're referring to? I just want to make sure I'm looking at the same thing. Oh, the plant, okay.
Yeah.
So, you are saying this is not a new pole? This is equipment that's being added to an existing pole?
There was no pole there before. I know that there's a pole between my property, my house, and the one next to me, that is an electrical one, that has the electricity.
Right.
That we've had, I've been in my house 18 years, and it's been there for 18 years.
That's the pole.
That's the...
This is the pole, the...
By the Ottoman.
Pole that's right near the Ottoman.
No, no, that's not, that's not the one.
I just wanted to make sure that this is the pole, right?
That's where the little yellow side is.
So, this is the one, this is, this is the Ottoman. This is main road, that's the, and that's the pole.
Well, they put that pole there, but my house is the one that has the two structures. You know, the second house from Masasoye... You know, the second house from Massasoit Inn is my house. And right here is an electrical pole with all kinds of electrical wires coming in from this side of the street to this side of the street. Okay?
This, this.
But not that.
Right, that's the one they're talking about. That's an existing pole. So that's the one they're gonna add to.
Right. They're, they're not putting in a new pole.
I understand what you're saying, but I'm talking about how many boxes of equipment it's gonna be in it.
I misunderstood. I thought you were talking about a new pole. So the. I, I, I think they're referencing, you know, a typical wiring C4 where they show the disconnect and the other boxes and so forth. So there, you're correct. There are four to five pieces of equipment that will be mounted to.
There are five pieces according to my pictures. Which is the one that was sent to me. It was sent via email, and I had to have all these things printed. Because you can't really see from the email, you know? And then they have the typical equipment, then they have the antenna detail, about 12 and a half inches wide and 36 and a half inches high. And when I called Verizon, they told me that that was, that that was metal because it didn't explain. It didn't give details in this picture that I have. So they said that it was gonna be heavy. So I called, since the, the pole that is there has wires going to the other side. I called National Grid, and they told me that they had electricity wires in that pole also. And they said that if. Five boxes were added to it, that if we have a lot of wet snow, and it could get heavy, and that could fall. So we were concerned about that because. Each one of us paid enough money buying the properties, never mind how much we have added to them in the last 15 or 18 years. And we don't want any more. Problems that could cause damage to our property.
And if you would be so kind, maybe, since we have an expert here, if maybe we could have, go ahead and have the expert address your concern, you know?
No, I, I understand what you're saying, but what I'm saying to you is that I've owned enough properties that I understand that whatever is not on paper, it doesn't exist. You know, we all, we all do things with advancement. It's not that I'm against technology. My son is a computer expert. He works at Golden Sachs in New York City. My house is almost 7,000 square feet. I have a router in the back of the house on the second floor and another router in the front. So my adult children can have all the internet and all the wonderful things that they do nowadays, you know? So I'm not against this. All I'm saying is that some of these things are concerning. On page 17 here, I have. That says construction on the sheet. It talks about the mounting bracket details. And it looks here that is, you know, it has a lot of parts, which I'm sure it does. And again, it has an antenna pole, another mounting bracket detail. And then it has another AW detail. It looks like it's, like a box that puts the other piece of equipment inside of it that holds it. At least that's what it looks like from here. And then on. On page 15. Then we have. All the parts that they're gonna put in. And it, it starts, you know, from the bottom. It gives details about all these little boxes, fuses, that they're putting in. And all the way up to the antenna way at the top of it. And it has measurements of, of how much they have in it.
Again, I, I, I feel like you're, you're concerned about adding this to an existing pole, which then could make that pole more dangerous and perhaps cause property damage, if I'm understanding your concerns. And I'm wondering if maybe one of the gentlemen could help relay some of those concerns by explaining how the construction and installation goes.
No, I, I mean, I know how to read, you know, I understand. On page six, it says at the bottom that this is a planning objective that they have. On page six at the bottom, and it says that they want to invest in infrastructure to support business development and cellular capacity. You know, that's, that's wonderful. But we have historical properties in an area that we want it to be residential. Just like when I bought that property. I didn't buy a property on King Street that has all kinds of businesses for the businesses to be able to have a lot of technology. Which, again, I'm not saying that it's not important. I know it's very important. All, the bottom line is that we would like to see if this same pole that they want to add for businesses to be able to have more technology or more accurate technology, have a tablet or like the iPhone that I carry that connects, you know, quicker. And, and you can transfer. Documents and all kinds of things. That is really wonderful. We just would like to see if you can put that pole in front of the high school where the park is. Because there's no historical properties there. You know, it's a park. And, and what it is, is we, property owners that pay massive amounts of taxes, do not have to worry that something might happen. Not because these men are not incompetent. I know that they're very well-educated and that they know what they're doing. But every time we have the news, we, the weather is crazy, you know, California slides down the mountain. I mean, all kinds of things happen all the time. And I do not want to lose, and my neighbors don't want to lose, the massive amounts of money that we have put to live in that area. We do not want to take any risk. It's not, again, we are not against it, but another, you know, half a block to the other side, there's what, like 10 acres of land in front of the high school, that they could put the pole right there. And it's only like six, you know, a little bit down. It's, it's not even, it doesn't even get to Dunkin' Donuts. You know, it's very small.
This isn't a new pole. Just to clarify, it's not a new pole.
I'm, I'm not saying that it's a new pole. I'm saying that adding the equipment, okay? They can use a pole that is already in front of the high school. And we do not have to worry about our properties if something happens. I hope you understand that. Because when tragedy happens, like, you know, because of weather or whatever, that houses are damaged. It's, it's on us. It's, it's not on anybody else. Nobody else is gonna come in and say, oh, my God, this happened.
Ma'am, I just want to point out, if you look at the map, I, I don't think if the pole fell, it would hit any structures. It's not close enough to any of the other structures, even the Autumn Inn, which it's closest to. It would not hit any structure. I think if you look at the, the map, it's, it's not that big a pole. It's, it's an existing pole.
I understand that, but when I talked to National Grid and I called Boston, the Better Business Bureau, to explain the situation because I didn't know where else, you know, my neighbors and I didn't know where else to call. They said, well, that they were gonna call me back. And they called me back and they explained about the area, about where the high school is, that it doesn't have residential houses next to it. And they could put that equipment there, and it wouldn't be any problem to do that.
Yeah, I think the issue, the dead spot, isn't at the high school, it's in this area. And it's a very limited, the, the equipment they're talking about using only serves a very limited area. So if they move that 10 poles up the road, it's not gonna.
It's not 10 poles up the road.
I'm, I'm just saying, if they move it 500 feet up the road, it's not gonna serve the area in question. So that's why they, that's why they proposed that existing.
To be there.
If, if you go to the other side of Elm Street, like, if my house is here and right here is the Autumn Inn, if you cross the street in that corner, there's a medical building. That doesn't have a house on it, and there are two poles right there. They could use one of those to put it in.
They could, but they, they've identified that this is the pole that gives them the best result for what they're trying to accomplish. Which is to give better coverage to the people who live in that particular area. So it's not something that's transferable to, you know, it, it's very site-specific. And, and it is to go on an existing pole.
Just for the sake of argument, can one of you speak to that?
But you don't understand, you.
Ma'am, ma'am, hold on, sorry. Could one of you speak to the fact, if there's a pole across the street at the medical building, and there's a pole in front of the Autumn Inn, does, do you have latitude to which pole to use or if you're gonna work with National Grid?
If you look at the map, I mean, I've lived here 18 years.
Let me have, give them a chance to respond.
We're trying to answer your question for you. Okay. Yeah, if you come up to the podium, please.
There's a couple of questions I thought I might be able to field. One of the reasons I gave you the photos to kind of give you a sense of what the installation looked like. When you do look at the wiring diagram, there's a number of different pieces to it. If you look at that, what we call the remote radio head, which has the, the radio, and then it's got a bracket, and the bracket attaches to the pole. Some of those boxes are actually behind the radio head, so that it, it contains multiple pieces of equipment. But it's, it's, it's all tucked together on that one bracket and then so. And then there's, you know, there's a, there's a fiber box shown as a box on there. But if you look at the photo, it's, it's a little, it's a little guy like that. And then as far as the pole, structural capacity of the pole, in this case, the, the work is done through a license agreement with National Grid. Verizon puts their application in with them. They do, they, them specifics on the equipment that's gonna go on the pole. National Grid reviews it. They do an analysis of the pole. And then they, after they confirm that the pole has capacity, people give a license back to, to Verizon to install on it. And National Grid does that analysis in this case. We do that structural analysis on other, Forever Source and some other companies. It is something they look at in detail. To be honest, what we find is the, the line loads significantly load the pole more than the equipment that we put on it because it's a heavy line, depending on if it's in line or if it's out of line. So that is, you know, 99, 95% of what loading goes to wood utility pole as compared to the small boxes that are going with vertical loads.
Thank you. And, and I'll just add, the question was in regards to potentially looking at utility poles across the street. I have knowledge of the area. I know in this particular circumstance, there are electrical wires extending across that portion of Elm Street. I don't have with me an entire site selection survey of those particular utility poles. But I can make a presumption based on the fact, and Mr. Johnson, please tell me if I'm wrong, that this pole only has secondary power on it. This is a lower level of voltage that is usually used to bring service to like residential homes. That the other side of Elm Street likely has primary power on it. And National Grid does allow co-location on primary power. That's the high voltage wires you always see at the top of the poles. But there's a number of factors that go into utility pole, telecommunications, site selection. Those poles hypothetically could be co-locatable, but they may have things like transformers on them. Those are those large step-down voltage units that take the power from the primary level to the secondary level. Those are not co-locatable by National Grid. They may have risers, which are like PVC pipes that rise up the side. Those, if they have primary power lines in them, those are not co-locatable. They may have primary power going in multiple directions. Those are called junction poles. Those are not co-locatable. So, you know, the pole that we picked makes sense for Verizon, first of all, because it is the right location to answer services. And in addition, you know, the fact that it's secondary only, the fact that it is not obstructed, I don't think on the top of the pole, makes it a more appropriate choice in this situation to Verizon to co-locate on. And frankly, is more preferred when possible by National Grid because that business is, you know, their main line of business is not to provide Verizon wireless service. Their main line of business is provide electrical service to the community. You know, they, they work with us and we work with them. That's the make-ready process. And so when we can, when we can take advantage of existing infrastructure that has the room for our services, that passes a structural analysis, that provides a benefit to the community and doesn't necessarily encumber poles that National Grid might deem of greater importance, we, we tend to feel that that's an appropriate choice for site selection. So again, not being able to speak about any other specific pole, you know, we, we feel that it's an appropriate pole to.
I, I understand what you're saying, but the pole that you're looking at is right next to the first driveway that the Autumn Inn has. And if you move, like, from here to that window, they have another driveway going out. In front of it, there's a street, and right in that corner, there's another pole.
Ma'am, I, I think we're going beyond the, the scope of this particular hearing.
No, I'm just saying that because there's no house there.
Right.
That there's a commercial building.
Yes.
In there. It doesn't, it doesn't cause any trouble. It's, it's the kind of thing that you're not gonna lose reception for six feet that goes across the street.
Ma'am?
I understand what you're saying, but my statement to you and the board would be respectfully that we don't believe that our current proposal is inappropriate. And there could be other poles that are appropriate, but we feel that this pole is appropriate.
Yeah, but, you know, I understand what you're saying, but the kind of thing is that we are the ones that live there. We are the one paying property taxes. And we are there because we wanted to have something simple. We don't want massive amounts of things in front of us like it's on King Street because it's a commercial street. We live in a residential historical area that has minimum amount of things in it. That's, that's what I'm saying.
Ma'am, I, I think we're, again, I think we're going a little beyond the scope of this particular hearing. The applicants have gone through the appropriate procedures and gone to the appropriate bodies within the city to be here tonight to present their, their proposal. Certainly appreciate your concerns, and now it's, it's on our, it's our job as the board to review both sides and, and make a determination. But I think we understand your concerns and we certainly appreciate you taking the time to come.
No, I came because we were told, you know, that, because we are property owners and taxpayers, that we had some saying on how our neighborhood, you know, develops. It's not a commercial area.
And we appreciate that.
And, and it's just very frustrating that, you know, I understand that they work for this company. But we are on our own. We don't have a company that has 400 million in the bank.
Well, but you do have the city of Northampton, and, you know, this has been a process. That's why they have to come here. They have to go through the process that has been established by the city, by the council, to make sure that neighborhoods are protected.
Well, I hope so. And if there's any difference, then my neighbor said that we will ask to have another meeting with us. Because between all of us. Because between all of us, we pay massive amounts of tax dollars to this town.
And that is certainly your, your.
And we, before it is denied or approved, if there's any difference, we would like to meet with you.
Okay.
All of us.
Well, we appreciate that. We'll go through our process. You always have the ability to appeal the decision or to take it to city council, take it to your select.
Are we going to be notified?
Of? Of the decision?
Mm-hmm.
Well, we're gonna make it in just a few minutes, so if you just wait, then you'll, you'll know what, uh, what the decision is.
I'm sorry, it's just that it's very frustrating.
And I can understand that. I have been on that side of the podium. I believe you. I can, I can empathize with you and, and, and understand what you're saying.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Other questions, comments from the board?
Just a confirmation. So in general, the poles, they're existing poles, but they're gonna be replaced. And so a thirty-foot pole is gonna be a thirty-four-foot pole when all is said and done?
In, in this case, the pole is, uh...
An existing wooden utility pole to be replaced.
Let me answer the question, you know? In some cases, they will be replaced. In some cases, they will not be replaced.
But there's existing poles at each site?
Correct.
Okay.
We are not adding a new pole.
Quantity's not gonna change.
Or creating a new ground.
Right, that's what I, yeah.
There's two of each. Two, two are going on the existing one, two are going on one.
Questions, comments from the board? Or a motion?
I just wonder if, have there been any pole that fell after Blizzard or with this installation that... Because the way the lady puts it, it seems that she's concerned also that any eventual weather can overwhelm and the pole can fall because of this, it's over with all these boxes and, uh, so I never heard about it, but it's a, it's a point that I bring it up. There is such things, have a guys, eyes of interest there, so.
Well, I mean, electric poles fall all the time in stores, so.
But that ought to be a case of, add a little more boxes or.
But there's a standard, I mean, you know, when you see the guy wires, they're there to prevent. And it's all engineered so that the structure itself is installed, based on the weight that will be on the pole and the height. So, um, you know, it has to be designed to meet standards so they don't fall over. And, you know.
I just gotta have to bring that up, so.
I think this pole, this, this particular pole, the one on Elm Street, is, is for secondary power. It's not a big hit. It, it doesn't have, you know, a lot of primary on top and a lot of weight. I don't, I, and I don't think this added equipment is going to in any way make this more susceptible to falling over than it already is. And I, I think the, the casual observer will never even know anything's changed after this work is done. I move to close public comment.
Second? I need a second.
Second.
Second, by the way. I can't do the second.
You said second.
All in favor? Aye. All opposed? Questions, comments, motions from the board?
I, I, I think it's, it's innocuous, uh, amount of work. We've, we've, we've put antennas all throughout the city on, on sides of buildings and, and I, and I get the residential versus commercial, but, um, this is not a commercial zone, but I don't think adding an antenna to this pole is gonna make it a commercial zone, so.
And there is commercial there.
Right, this is, it's right next to the Autumn Inn, which is, right.
Yeah, comes the way.
And across from the Medical Center, so, um, if, if you could argue that if, on, in any area on Kings, on Elm Street, that's where you'd wanna put it 'cause that's the, the most commerc- even though it's not a commercial area, it's the most commercial area of Elm Street.
Right. Till you get all the way up to, yeah.
Right. I'll make a motion. Uh, move to approve the site plan by Verizon Wireless to add telecommunications equipment to existing utility pole in front of Twelve Summerfield Street, Florence MAP ID twenty-nine dash one-one-three. In front of two-seventy-five Elm Street, North Hampton MAP ID thirty-one A dash ten. In front of twenty-seven Lad Ave, Florence MAP ID thirty-B dash eight-one. And near one-on-one Riverside Drive, Florence MAP ID twenty-three D dash zero-four-nine.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor? Opposed? Thank you, and thank you.
Thank you.
You did not.
And you don't have any ARs.
But I thought we had the.
But he has to recue, so we don't have.
Oh, you have to. You can't just ask. You have to. Sometimes you ask if I want you to.
This one I can't, 'cause I know the, I know the builder.
Okay, so, okay. This one you have.
This one is, is a clear conflict.
Oh, okay. Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Second by. Whether he knows or not. All in favor? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And what is the process to, to appeal?
So, um, the decision will be issued to the clerk, and then notice gets sent to the abutter, so the decision's been issued, and it has the date of the, of the date that the appeal period runs. Um, you get the notice, and then anybody who is, um, everyone within three hundred feet is notified. And then the appeal process, you would take the appeal to Superior Court and file a copy of the city clerk.
So where do, where do?
So just, just like you got that, you'll get a notice of the decision? Just because you got, because you're in a, you're considered an abutter, so you got this, so you'll get another one telling you of the decision?
And then it says exactly what to do to appeal?
It says, it'll tell you that you can appeal in accordance with the state statute that tells you, and it gives you the appeal deadline.
I know, but there's must be a process of what you have to do and where do you have to write.
It references the.
There's a state statute, and then you can go to that and see what, exactly what the, what the procedure is.
And that's in the computer?
Yes.
Is that attached?
Yeah, you, you can look it up.
Okay, so we're gonna receive notice?
Yeah, everyone that got one of these cards will get the, will also get the notice of the decision.
Okay, thank you.
Here's the bigger thing. Pole that we're talking about. That's my house.
Oh, gee, look at that. Look at that.
What service do you have?
If I go inside my house, I can't.
Oh, really? I, you're kidding?
No. And so I was thinking, oh, great. And then I look at the bubble, and literally, it's right up. I'm like, come on!
Well, that's what I, that's why I didn't.
You're gonna have to walk the door.
They're so, they're so small.
Yeah.
I mean, I, I know, I understand that it's like filling, you know, it's like filling leaks or something, I guess, but.
They put it over to the Medical Center, that would probably get in my house.
Wester Current.
Wow.
Wester what?
But, you know, it's still Elm Street, so it doesn't matter that.
Yeah, exactly.
But it, yeah, it, that's the part, I still don't, I mean, you know, I mean, the one on Ryan Road, I could see where that, like, fills that neighborhood. That's where.